If you look at Attachment 1, it's the first sheet after the agenda. The totals from Schedule 1, and it's the council member changes. The total that you all have voted on, and these would be cost addition to the mayor's proposed budget, $735,943. What was approved from the individual council member changes, $176,872. Although you haven't voted on, what's been submitted as late item proposed changes, and attached to this is the late item changes from all funds, but the funds, but the changes affecting general fund are $682,040 credit. So at this point, what you would need to balance the budget would be $233,775 of additional funding. You can do that by making changes to the revenue, you can make changes to what you've already voted on, or make changes to any other expense in the form of reduction to come up with the additional funding requirement. But one thing we will need to do is, you guys will need to review and approve the late items also today. Any questions?
The late items, is that the 600?
That's the Schedule 4. It's the last, it's the last document attached to the packet.
And that number is?
Schedule 4.
Yeah, yeah, but what's the number? What's the sum, what's the total on that late item? It's 682?
Yes, 682040.
All right, but take us to that again, I can't find it.
It's the, it's the Schedule 4, it's the last documents attached to the packet.
All right.
The first sheet shows LFUCG fiscal year 2010 budget late item change summary. And the first two pages would be the General Services Fund, and then the next item, I mean, the next attachment is Family Care Center Fund 1102, and so on.
Okay.
It's late items that affect the various funds. And I have some of my budget in here.
And we have a correction to the fourth page from the back of late items that we'll pass out to you.
Why don't you?
It's for the sanitary sewer.
All right, all right.
It doesn't impact.
This is not something we've seen before, right? Okay, that's fine. Go through and tell, you know, I've been on here, I've been there three years, and I'm going to admit to confusion about this. So for new council members, it's probably also same way. This is reconciliation of?
Late items, they normally pop up after the mayor's proposed budget has been submitted. And they give rise from revenue adjustments, budget amendments that have been passed or in the process of being passed since the mayor's proposed budget, with future implication for expense, revenue, or fund balance. A late item can be additional expense item under full cost relating to personnel action approved by a blue sheet since the mayor's proposed budget, and also corrections to the mayor's proposed budget through errors or admissions. So those are primarily all the different reasons or areas that would give rise to a late item, but primarily it's changes that occur after the mayor's proposed budget has been submitted. And this is normal, this is, this is my seventh budget, it's happened every year.
Just may I ask a question, please? Are these changes submitted by the mayor's office, or these incorporate the changes made by the council as well?
No, these are, these come from the administration in one sense or another.
Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Just, I have a quick question because, just to be clear, several of these items relate to the stormwater fund, which currently we don't have, so can I presume these are projecting after January, and particularly this first one at the top, which is the $359,620 one? Is that a personnel, are these personnel costs throughout?
A lot of the changes to the stormwater fund are aligning their proposal with the rate plan that's been set in place. Their original budget didn't incorporate what was passed, so it was a little, it was higher than what's actually going to go forward. So a lot of their changes are getting them in line with the rate structure that you all have presented and approved.
So, so in terms of indirect costs throughout government?
How we're going to charge other funds for people who work in that fund and those sorts of things, but to base it based on the plan that was approved.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, on the agenda, okay. We can, Mr. Denny.
I would go ahead and put it out there and make a motion to accept the late item changes to FY 2010 budget, so moved.
Second.
Motion and a second to accept the late item changes. Floor is available for discussion on the motion. Is there any discussion? Mr. Martin.
Can you tell me where the, I'm looking for this 682040 number, and I know we talked about that, but I'm still trying to find that. Just give me a page number or something.
Jerry?
Yes.
I can't find that number.
Yeah, if you, it's the second page on the General Services Fund 1101, and if you look at the second page, page 2 of 2.
Why don't you go up, why don't you go up to help him? All the pages are numbered.
It's this number, plus this number. This is the increases.
Very incorrect.
No, that includes $100,000 from the mayor's proposed fund balance, but what we want to do is net these two numbers.
Okay, okay.
So what I understand, Mr. Vice Mayor, is that at the end of the General Services Fund 1101, after item 20, the 701800 minus the 19760 is going to give us the 682040. So that, that number is a net number that's not actually on our materials, but you'd have to net out two numbers that we do have. So I understand that.
Okay, any other questions?
Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, ready for vote then? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. Motion carries. Okay, go back to, item number 2 is Councilmember McCord's recommendation, which is the last item on Schedule 3. Councilmember McCord.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Just with time constraints, the other day, on Thursday, I felt like it was easier to bring this forward this morning, but what I'm proposing is a million dollars bonded for the Trail Fund, Trail Bond Fund, and for a couple of reasons, very specific, not only does this government now and this city have a tremendous amount of momentum in this direction, but the Federal Transportation Reauthorization Bill, known as Safety Lou, comes up for a reappropriation in Congress on September 21st. Safety Lou runs out in September 21st, and there's a tremendous amount of pressure, and in a positive way, to change some of the way that formula works, and to look for a lot more green transportation infrastructure. And by a city having cash money, money that they can use for, for match money readily available, this million can turn itself into a whole lot more. And so I move that we accept a million dollars into the Trail Bond Fund, or to bond a million dollars for the Trail Bond Fund, so moved.
There's a motion and a second. Floor is available for discussion. Councilmember?
Yeah, well.
All right. Yeah, we'll start using this then. It's available. Electronic Communications. Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. The column, Jerry, impact on fiscal year 10, budget is a zero, but then if you, is that correct? The bonds would be sold toward the end of 2010, and the debt service would be in 2011?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Councilmember Martin.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I support this, this motion. I think that this is where we decide whether we're going to have a continued sustain efforts to increase the trail system in Lexington. I think those of us who went to Madison, Wisconsin, were very impressed by what type of activity that a large trail system provides. It's a community amenity, and I think it, it helps to promote folks who are active and get out of their house, and to, and to ride to work and things like that. So I think it's a, it's a show that we're interested in a sustained effort in this, and, and so I support it. Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Councilmember James.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember McCord, is this, is there a list of, is there a trail that you have in mind that this will be appropriate to, or this just goes into a general pot?
General pot, and one of the other recommendations, it's not really a committee recommendation, but one of the things that I would like for us to work on, and it can be done very quickly, is to establish a policy for our trail funds and so forth. A lot of times what happens is, is that we assign monies to a trail, and the design component of it is very inexpensive, but it takes five to six months to do, and it drags into another season. And what we'd like to do is start looking at a, kind of a first in, first out, so that some of these designs that we have for trails, kind of all around the city, once we have money available and those final barriers have been removed, that we start building that. Money, local money like this allows us the flexibility to do those type of things along with leveraging when we get grant money for other, other trails.
Do you, do you know, did the mayor include within his proposed budget any money for trails?
No, that's why I wanted to put it back in.
Thank you, thanks.
Councilmember Lane.
I have a question for you, Mr. McCord. We had some money already approved for the coming fiscal year, I believe, that was sort of reallocated towards the horse park, trying to get that completed, which I supported that idea.
Sure.
But if we are able to get matching money with this other million dollars that we're proposing today, would we, would a priority be to where we've shifted money, putting money back in those areas first before we did other?
I think, Councilmember Lane, that's a, that's a great point, that's why there needs to be a, we don't have a policy as to how we use this, and that's the, once we get past the budget, that was one of the things that I wanted to work on, was to, to come back with a recommendation of policy, because you're exactly right, you want to be able to know where it goes, and ideally you want to have a, what we're calling a first in, first out, meaning projects that are ready to go, wherever they may be, get funded, and then we keep backfilling these types of things. But the answer is, is that we need a policy, and we want to work on that after this, after the budget.
Good, well, because I am supporting this, but, you know, I feel that where we had money already approved, and we've shifted it to accomplish this project, the horse park, we ought to get those people taken care of. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Ellinger.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. McCord, how much, will this cost us in 11 if we're deferring in 10, in fiscal year 11? I guess while you're up here, the next question I'm going to ask is, what have we deferred from 10 to 11 that we're going to have to be paying for? Because we keep saying it's not going to cost this budget, but it does cost us money sometime. I see people stand up and then sitting down, so I don't.
I'm not sure what papers I need to answer what question, so I was trying to come prepared. Your first question was, how much the million dollars would cost?
Right, well, that cost us in 11.
Okay. Okay, we have trails on 10-year, and an estimated 10-year bond is $120,000 a year for a million dollars.
And then my next question, how much have we deferred? Because we keep saying it won't cost us in, in this budget, but it will cost us in 11. And that might be a question you might have to get back with me, but I know there's other issues that we've, we've talked about, saying, well, we're not going to, it's not going to cost us this year.
Right. A million dollars for PDR is a 20-year, so that's $75,000. This would be for 10 years, $120,000 if the trails, that's another million. Then we did 2 million of infill, and I believe that is 20-years, so that would be another $150,000. So I'm not doing the math in my head, about 300, thank you.
And then that'll be consistent through the?
It'd be for the next 10 to 20 years, depending on whether it was a 10-year bond or a 20-year bond.
And how much do we have for trails in this budget right now?
We, we have on the 2010, well, you see, I didn't bring everything I needed. There were two items that were related to trails that were not decided to be on the 2010 bonding, because we thought we could get federal funds to pay for those projects.
We thought, but we said we didn't get it?
Well, I mean, we're all in the process of applying and waiting, so there's no, I'm not sure if there's a definitive answer on that specific project. Do you know? Some we have gotten answers on, many others we're still waiting, so I'm not clear as to which one this is.
Yeah, you know, I agree with you, we need to be careful about the additional bonding. But I think in these cases, we're getting matching money.
And I thought you were going to ask, be related to that, I mean, that's a commentary. Yes, sir.
Back whenever we were going through the budgeting process very early in the year, we had the spreadsheet of trails that were under design, scheduled for construction in fiscal year 10. It appeared that we had enough bond money from previous years to do all those designs and construction, but a couple of things happened. As, as we got into the spring, we were awarded some additional grants, which we had to put up match money for, that took some of that bond money that we had available. And we also received a large sum of money of the ARRA money for both phases of the legacy trail. The legacy trail, the Lexmark phase of the legacy trail, in order to go ahead and have an opportunity to have that ready for next year, what we needed to do was to use some of that trail bond money to, in order to start the design process. And that would take away some more of that bond money. So basically, what was happening is because of the matches and trying to get trails started, what we had on our spreadsheet for design and construction in, in this fiscal, this coming fiscal year, we started to lose some of that bond money that we didn't realize was going to happen back when we were going through the budgeting process, and took bond money out. So the, the influx of an additional million dollars, what that would do is it would replace, as Councilmember Lane said, some of the money that we've had to displace to go ahead and start the legacy trail design for Lexmark, but would also leave a pot of money if that becomes the process for an first in, first out. And some of these designs, even though you may have a very simple trail design, if there's issues that come up, there's unforeseen things till you actually do a design, work with neighborhoods, some of those get held up. What I would envision, the million dollars would potentially not be needed, the entire million dollars in this fiscal year for construction. But a portion of it may. However, there may be other opportunities for match later in the year, where you'd want to have that pot of money and not put off construction of a trail. So I hope that answers your questions, and I'd be glad to take any other ones.
Thank you.
Councilmember Lane, do you want to say something?
Just as a follow-up, but what do, on our typical match from the federal government on trails, about, are we getting more than one to one on some of those? I'm sorry, I didn't understand. Like, if we put $100,000 up, we get $100,000 from the federal government, and maybe something from state, or is there, how much, what's the typical match for every dollar we put up on trails? I believe the TE grants are a 20% match, and the CMAC grants are 20% match. Now, the stimulus money did not require a match, however, it's not available yet, and that's where we, we had the problem with the legacy trail, is in order to go ahead and start the design, it's going to be several months before that ARRA money is available to us. Okay, that's all I have, thank you.
Mr. Martin.
So we've talked about, and approved some things here, about one-to-one matches. We added a million dollars for the PDR program because we got another million dollars. Here's a situation where we get, we put up a million dollars, and we get, what, four on top of that, is that right, for a total $5 million project? So that's a, that's a good return on our money. Thank you.
Anybody else?
I was coming, I had Jay just in support. You know, it's like you said, that a lot of, you know, substantial traction and support has been illustrated for the trails, and you're to be commended for that. Everybody's worked with you on this, council as well. One of the things that, is you've been to Louisville, talked to Dan and David Jones, and what they're doing in Louisville. One of the, I guess, concerns that go along with the inspiration of the project is, at least for me, is that it, I still think of the connect, you know, the language that we're using the other night about streets and sidewalks connectivity. When we go to Madison, one of the things that we saw was, you know, we were right there in the downtown, and you could jump right onto a trail, and there was even, you know, you looped back. And you said the other night, or the other day, one of the days when we've been having some of these meetings, we've talked about, you know, you grab what you can, when you can on these projects, that's what you've learned. Is there something to learn from, with that in mind, you know, that we have sort of grabbed bagged at it and done what we can, and we have had some plan? It's not like we haven't had any plan at all, but there have been, there has been. But my question has to do with having seen these trail systems where there's real connectivity in a sense, and inspirational sort of places where they land, you know, a lake, a river, whatever it may be, a bed and breakfast, you know, the pub, whatever it may be, you know, there's going from somewhere to somewhere. And seeing what they're doing in Louisville with the lace, what do they call it, the golden lace, something, emerald, right, Emerald Trail? So is there a chance to go there? What are, what's your thoughts there on opportunities?
Well, and that's kind of why this is key, is that if a city has money that it controls, that it's flexible with, then you can take advantage of these situations. You have, as you saw the other night, you do have a Greenway master plan here in Lexington. We do know where we should build and can build. Partly, there's the issue of feasibility, and that came up the other night, where, what is a feasible project? One of the key reasons why a legacy trail is so important is because it connects an urban core to a rural setting, and to one of your largest tourist destinations. And, and once you have that in the ground, and you've got a date certain, 465 days to have it in the ground, then what that does is it all of a sudden becomes a Drano, if you will, Vice Mayor, for some of these things, and you start looking for key places where you want to, to put this, not just out in the field. But I would point you back to Boulder, Colorado. One of the interesting things that they did, and I know Councilmember Ellinger and Councilmember Myers and I spent a day riding and looking at this, but they had an EPA mandate to do flood mitigation. And what they ended up doing is every time they had a stream to Ford, they went ahead and put a bike connectivity in an underpass, and didn't lead anywhere, it was out in the middle of a field. But once they started filling those in, they used a situation like our water quality issue, and they started building that in. And Boulder, Colorado had 37, 39 underpasses to the tune of a million dollars apiece, and you never intersected traffic, you could kind of go from here to there. And they used situations like that to build where they could, and then connect it. So your point is well taken, and you want to, you want to try and build where you can, but having money that the city controls, and you have kind of a first in, first out policy, allows for us to take advantage.
So part of, I mean, just thinking hypothetically, that part of the next phase could be adding to the plan already, already established, that would add tactics like what you just described in Boulder, right?
Absolutely.
So that we then would be deliberately, intentionally focused on doing, taking those initiatives that pull it all together, right?
Absolutely, and one other thing I'd point out to council members that was a lesson learned in Madison, was that having monies like this allows you some flexibility in a situation where they had a neighborhood where they built a trail behind the neighborhood, the neighbors said, "We don't want any lights back here." No lights, no lights. Well, the city knew that someday they probably would like lights back there, or new neighbors might, when they moved into those homes, might demand that. So they went ahead and used some, some money while they had it all tore up, and they put just the conduit in so they could drop lights in later. Those are the types of things that if you've got some, some local monies you control versus some of these monies that we get from the federal government. And Mike, you can, you know how frustrating it is, when you get this federal government money, it takes a long time to turn it from the grand award into asphalt. So if you've got local monies and can be flexible, you can keep this on track. And I really see, you know, you don't want to miss this, that the Federal Transportation Bill only comes up every five years, and there is a strong, strong push in Congress to change from just roads, 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 to other types of infrastructure. And if Lexington has resources that it can draw upon very quickly, we stand to benefit tremendously. How that'll play out, I have no idea, but it's wise planning.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? All right, hearing none, ready for a vote? All in favor, please indicate by punching eye electronically. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Councilmember McCord? All right, next on our agenda is... Okay, we've, we've completed, so just to confirm, we've completed the item number one, item number two, we've passed the motion on item number three. We are, to summarize, right now, we're at two... Oh, Mr. Martin? That's right, Doug's, yeah, okay, let's do that then. Doug has a, has distributed, everybody has it at their, at their place, a, an email from Councilmember Martin to Rebecca, and then from Jerry. Councilmember Martin.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. This is a non-budget recommendation. If, if you recall, many of the links made non-budget recommendations, and, and this is just, just a request to add that to the lists. This will, I don't think we voted on these at all, but it was a request to, I think, the council administrator to add this to the lists. I just have become aware of some, some issues about neighborhoods having trouble putting signs out, announcing that they're having neighborhood meetings or neighborhood sponsored functions, and I just would like to make a recommendation that we look at this in the, in the coming year to, to see where the ordinance is, how it's being applied, and whether we need to revisit the signed ordinance. I also understand, since I sent this email on Friday, was that we're also having some problems with our, our commercial signs. I think the commercial developers have been, and owners of commercial property have been told that they're limited to six square feet in the... they're limited to six square feet in the size of their commercial signs. And so I think, I'd like to add that as well. But this is a non-budget recommendation. I don't know if this needs to be voted on or not. I guess I'd ask Jerry about whether we need to vote on this, but it was just a Link recommendation. I guess I would like to add it to our, as a personal item.
There's probably two things, there's probably several, but two things come to mind. You can add it to the list of items to be considered after the budget, or we can, you can make a motion to refer to either services or planning committee. That's probably what I would do.
I guess I'd make a motion to refer this to the planning committee.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to refer it. All right, there's a... All right, it's Councilmember Martin's motion. So do you want to take into consideration any of these comments?
I think it's appropriate to send it to the planning committee. It's a part of the zoning ordinance, it's Article 17 of our zoning ordinance, and it is administered by building inspection as a part of our zoning ordinance. So I think that's the appropriate place for it.
There's a, there's a motion and a second floors available for discussion. Councilmember Lawless? I'm trying to, all right. Thank you. All right, we've got... Councilmember Blues, then Stenit, then Lane, then Lawless.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. That was going to be my recommendation too, to put it in, in planning. This is not a simple issue, and I, and I think we really ought to see how it squares with the, you know, with, with the, with the sign ordinance. There are, as you say, other issues, commercial signage as well, so it's appropriate to go into planning, and I think we ought to do that.
Councilmember Stenit.
Councilmember Martin, I was just going to give you some food for thought. We did address this issue three years ago in planning committee, and we did make a policy change then. I don't know why they haven't conveyed that to you, but we do allow for, within 24 hours, if those neighborhood signs for meetings are put up and taken down, then they will not be in violation of the current sign ordinance. But it may obviously need to be further discussion, and maybe put that as part of the zoning ordinance itself. But again, that takes a zoning text amendment, which is a much different process than many of us go through when we approve an ordinance. So I welcome changing that whole zoning ordinance if you want to do so and move forward in the planning. But we did change that as a policy in Fayette County. We did change that three years ago and vote on through the planning committee.
I think we have some systemic issues to, to address, and three years is a long time for even my memory, so.
Councilmember Lane, then Lawless.
There's other issues regarding signage for the commercial real estate properties. And as you all know, I am involved in that business. And the Commercial Property Association of Lexington, at their most recent meeting, indicated that something like 35 of their members have been cited for illegal commercial signs. And I, so what, what I have suggested is the attorney for CPAL is going to be conferring with our legal department with the idea of coming up with some type of a text amendment that would then be submitted to the planning commission, and then would come back through council for review. I would like to suggest that we try to clean the whole sign ordinance up where we're at it, and perhaps put Councilmember Martin's suggested change in there, just sort of do an overhaul of that ordinance. As I understand it, I think it was done 26 years ago or 28 years ago and hasn't been revised. The zoning ordinance hasn't been revised in that area for that period of time, so this would give us a chance to sort of bring it up to the modern era that we're in today.
Okay. Councilmember Lawless, you're, you're okay with no comment, all right? Looks like we're ready for a vote then on the motion. All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. Motion carries. Okay, moving right along. Looks like then to just sort of summarize where we are, and correct me if I'm mistaken on this, anybody? We are, if we go back to Jerry's second page, the summary of the numbers, we have a net additional $230,775 that has been proposed. That's net of additions and subtractions. So the floor is open for discussion regarding how we deal with that. Any... Yes, sir. No, no, it's this page right here. Jerry's got it up right there. Councilmember James, thank you. I'm still looking at hand. Councilmember James, then Councilmember Stenit. Councilmember James?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. My question is probably more for Jerry or for George, or Councilmember Myers. Within the outside agency oversight and one of the proposals had to do with the insurance, has that calculation been taken into account when, in revenue discussions, as far as the increase in that?
I don't think it has. I'm not even sure that it's been done, and I'm not sure that it can be done. So we might want to call.
Are you familiar with what I'm talking about, Mary?
Are you talking about the health insurance? Actually, those revenues run through the self-insurance fund, so they would not have anything to do with the, you know, with the budget for the general fund. Except for that, if there is a deficit at year-end in that insurance fund, the general fund picks up a proration based on the number of employees that are in the general fund.
But it doesn't work in reverse. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Myers, you want to?
Mary, Ms. Vister? How is the calculation made to determine what we put in that self-insurance fund?
It's based on what the projected costs are. Every year when we set the plan rates for the employees, we look at how much, you know, how much the average claims will be for a single plan, you know, married with child or family plan. And so then we project out what we think the enrollment will be, and, you know, how much, there's a decision made on how much the employee is going to pay and how much the city will pay to supplement. So that's done really at the plan design when we're going through the benefit process during the year.
And what time of the year is that done?
It's normally in the fall. We did it, I want to say it was like September, October-ish this year, because the decision has to be made on whether we're going to change rates or not when we go out for open enrollment for the employees.
So then, is it your anticipation that the rates will go down for employees based on this pool being subtracted, or?
Well, actually, in the last two years, if you remember, we have had a deficit in that fund, and at year-end, we've had to kick in additional money from the general fund, from urban service, and from the sewer fund to cover the deficit. Off the top of my head, if I recall, 2008, I think it was around $3.6 million. So what we are anticipating is that that additional fund, funding will go away.
Okay. And that's what was the impetus for moving in this direction? Was that $3.00 million that we had to spend?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Stenit.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I think Mr. O'Meara summed it up last week, gave us a target that the mayor proposed in his budget of $278.8. I think that's right, is that correct? $278.8 is the revenue current projected number that the mayor balanced the budget with. And in recognizing that, we have another 200-plus thousand to come up with. One idea that we did talk about when we went through franchise fees and permits about five meetings ago was to change the projected revenue number on franchise permits. This is the permit from Kentucky American Water, Columbia Gas, et cetera. If you look at the last nine years, we historically have averaged about 9%. But if you take out years 2004 and 2005, where the percentages are 46 and 25% increases, which were very abnormal, we usually track between 4% and 6% revenue stream each year. In this budget, the mayor's projected 3%, somewhat a little more conservative than some of the averages in the past years. So what I would look at with a lot of the fee increases from Kentucky American recently, from Columbia Gas, that there is a strong possibility, and I know we did talk about it briefly, that this number could be very conservative. So I would make a motion, put it out there, to change it from 3% to a 4% projected number. And Mr. O'Meara, I don't know if we just do the fuzzy math of add three into the 17.3 to get another percentage point. I mean, we don't even have to go for a full percentage point, we can go half a percent at 3.5, and that's a very doable number. Even if you look at the last three years, FY 2009 will finish at 6.2%, which is still a lot higher than 3%, especially with all the rates. Again, this is based on the rates customers are paying. So unless we see a significant usage go down, which hasn't happened yet, possibly in water it has, but most of the rates are going up, so our percentage will go up. So I would make a motion to amend it to 3.5%.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. The floor is available for discussion. Councilmember, are you wanting to, wanting to speak on this? Okay. Anybody else? Does anyone want to speak on this motion? Councilmember Ellinger?
I didn't hear. What will that raise in the difference then?
I'm actually doing the math for it right now. Give me one second. I want to say 2.8 million would be the difference of half a percent. Is that what you got, Bill or Mary?
Yeah, Vice Mayor, can I continue up with that then?
We just need to shore up that number.
While he's working the number, Councilmember...
And one thing I did leave out, Councilmember Ellinger, this is also, the 278 number does not include the fund balance from FY 2008. Keep that in mind. So if we do have an economic downturn during this fiscal year, it does not include the $4 million fund balance from 2008.
Didn't we chew that up in 2009?
No, we have not. So it does not include, so should the economy do, does turn worse, we have a $4 million cushion that could be there, but we can't use it to balance the budget. That's the policy we changed.
For what it's worth, you know, I think we should also be mindful that at least the three years that I've been on the council, it's been a struggle to actually meet the budget, the original budget, in terms of expenditures. This year, the budget was 273 million, right, Bill? 273 and change?
273 revenue, 273 in revenue.
The budget, the original budget was 273?
Original budget was 275.
Okay, and we ended up at 268, right?
267.8.
Okay, I'm just, yeah, order of magnitude. I'm trying to just get an order of magnitude. Original budget was 275 million for fiscal '09, we're spending... That's why I thought, I was saying it was 270...
273A is what you said.
273, 273.8.
What page?
Your summary, I believe, last week.
Okay, excuse me. FY '09 adopted budget, 273.8.
273.8 million, we are actually, we are actualizing in terms of revenue and roughly expenses, 268 million and change.
Yes.
Okay. So the point of that is that we have, I wouldn't say the word struggled, to achieve the budget, but we have not met the budget. We haven't spent as much as we budgeted, for what that's worth, as I said beginning. If we, if the same model translated into this year, budget is 278, and we were $5 million short of that, so we arguably might spend $5 million less. If Councilmember Stenit's point he made about the fund balance, you've got that reserve in addition to the Economic Rainy Day Fund. Councilmember, I was just waiting on, that was my comment on the motion. We have a motion on the floor. Is there further discussion about the motion?
Can I continue?
Yeah, Councilmember Ellinger.
Okay, well, I guess, two things then, because you brought up the $4 million that we had from '08. Do we not have responsibilities, if we have a surplus, to put into contingency fund by statute if we have certain amount? And I think in the '09, we haven't done that either, have we? So that might be a liability too, that we have by statute if we don't change that, correct?
I'm pausing to, to organize my thoughts. In, in the FY '09 budget that was adopted, there was a portion of that saying that it was expected to have retirements and have out-of-the-ordinary expenses, and that we thought we would have to draw from the contingency, economic contingency for that purpose, and we would not make the $50,000 per month contribution into the 2009, into the economic contingency in '09. So we haven't dipped into that contingency, so there's discussion on whether we should or should not put that $50,000 per month into the '09. And we want to see what our fund balance and what our results are and discuss that with you. That's '09. '10 is based on the assumption...
I guess, I guess to get back to that, he said that we still have a $4 million that we have, that we can look back on and say, well, we always have that to fall back on. Is that true or not?
Well, depending on whether we put 25% of the unrestricted into the economic contingency.
But is that not required by statute that we do that?
The 2009 budget had a statement and was passed by council that suspended that for 2009.
That's, but if you, but if you have a surplus in that part of it, that you have put 25% in that, plus you had to put the $50,000 per month?
All those are true statements. In the 2009 budget, the council passed a suspension of that.
Okay, so is, so I guess I'm trying to get back to where he says we have $4 million as a surplus. Is that a correct statement, that we always can look back on that as saying?
It depends on whether we take 25% and put into the economic contingency.
Okay. And then the next question I have is the, their change to the 3.5, would that be a recommendation that you would make?
Change to the 3.5. To answer the question, I think it's about, it's a little short of $800,000, going from three to three and a half.
I guess, when we're looking at our estimates and our calculations, and when we, when we make that as a recommendation, would that be something as revenue that you would, would agree with, that we should use that as to help balance this budget, that we expect, our expectations to grow in this? Because you give us different expectations, and you calculate what you think they're going to be. Now, is this something that, I mean, I guess, we can, we can put revenue numbers at whatever we want, not to say they're going to, they're going to reach it, because it's all on expectation. You'd balance this budget on a 3% growth, and now we're looking at 4.2% growth. Now with this one, would this be something that you would recommend? Because you had a certain number initially that you thought it would be, and now we're changing that number. Do you agree with those changes in how we calculate that number?
If, if you're asking me, is a 3.5% a reasonable budget for franchise fees for next year?
Yes, that's my question.
I think the answer is yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion on the motion that's before us? Okay. Councilmember Stenit, would you restate your motion so we, before we vote?
And Mary and Bill, you all did get the numbers about $800,000?
It was 88,000.
88?
Mary, why don't you come up to the mic, please? Thank you.
Because what we're looking at now, just so everybody's clear, 3% is generating 17.3 million right now. So a half a percent will generate...
If we, if we increase the FY '09 projected of 16.8 million by 3.5% instead of 3%, we would end up with 17.388 million, which is $88,000 more than what we currently have. So it will get you $88,000.
Okay, I see what your chart does. You're basing on prior year increase versus what we're actually collecting, the overall sum that we're collecting, I mean, in terms of what we hope the revenues are. Then we have some more work to do, but I, I'll stand behind the 3 and a half. Then we have some more work to do, but I'll stand behind the 3.5% number, unless anybody wants to amend it to 4. But, because again, in FY 2009, we projected 1.5% of the original, and now we're coming in at 6.2 approximately. I don't know if that number's changed dramatically, but that's a huge jump from what we projected.
Okay. Councilman Lane, is this on this motion?
Yes, sir.
All right.
Yeah. Excuse me, I'm listening to a voice. I ran the number. We would have to have a 4.17% increase to increase the revenue by $200,000. This is increased over this estimated revenues for this year, instead of 3.5. You want to round it to 4.2. It'd be 7 tenths of 1% increase in growth, excuse me, it'd be 1.2% increase in growth versus, no, it's 4.2 versus 3%. That would bring our revenue up to about 17 million and 17.5 million, a $200,000 increase.
Are you talking about the overall budget number, or the franchise?
No, I'm talking about the franchise fee number. All right, what I'm saying is, if I understand what you were saying, we were going to increase the franchise fee to pick up additional 230,000 approximately. That's not what you're?
No, my motion was to leave it at 3.5%. So we pick up additional 88,000 approximately right now.
Okay.
I mean, you can obviously change 3.5% to another number.
No, I'm just giving you the number we would need, we probably need to go up to 4.2% increase to get up to 200,000.
Is that an amendment to the motion?
I'm not making a motion. I was just for the information, since you were trying to run the number on it.
You want to amend your motion?
I'll make that amendment to 4.2. So move.
Accept that, Mr. Stenit. There's a second to the amendment. We vote on the amendment to the motion. Councilmember James. Lawless?
Okay. My question is for Ms. Fister. Over, is there historical data that tells over the past, I don't know, whatever number of years, say the past 10 years, what the revenue has actually been for the franchise fees that you could give us? I mean, are we, it's, what, page 14, Little Book. And the franchise fees is a function of weather and of use. So it can fluctuate.
I'm listening, I'm sorry.
So, are you able to find it?
Hold on, I gotta find my Little Book. Jerry, do you have that? Can you put it on the overhead if you have it? Thank you. Oh, no, that's okay. What's that starting, what's the starting year that's on that screen, on that bar graph? A1?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
So you can see that it does fluctuate, and, you know, it fluctuates both on the usage and on what the weather patterns are. I mean, it's hot versus if we have extreme weathers.
All right, thank you. That chart helps. If you can leave that up there for just a moment, that'd be helpful. Thank you.
Any other discussion on the motion to amend? Councilmember Gordon?
I'd like for?
Is this on the, well, I don't know if this is?
Are you working off the electronic?
It's a tough one, because we know we're having to escape that now, because we've got an amendment.
Well, I just want to ask, Phil O'Meara or Mary Fister, if the 4.2%, will you confirm what number that will get us?
201,600.
So it's not really quite what would balance the budget?
Be about 29,000.
And can you speak to?
It means we'd be down to 1 hundredth of 1%.
Yes. Can you speak to?
We're getting close.
Can you speak, since we're on the air, to the impact of what the increase in, I think we've got an increase in water rates, we've got KU who's either applied or been granted an increase in rates, and if I recall, Columbia Gas, have they, they went down, and insight, I mean, can you speak to the impact of increased rates, which we know are coming on this franchise fee?
No, ma'am, I have not, I have not rerun the numbers based on any rate increases that have?
I didn't mean specific numbers. Do the rate increases affect the franchise fees?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, that's all I wanted. They will make it go up if the, depending on weather and usage.
Usage is the same, the rates would make it. It's a function of both rate and usage. So if rate goes up, usage goes down, we don't see the same percentage increase in revenues.
Okay.
The opposite can occur.
And my other question, just based on this budget summary, franchise permits, is there any reason to, I mean, to expect that, we've only had, we haven't had a year where they've been below for, where the percentage is less than 4% since fiscal year '03. And so what would be the reason to expect that we would be, we would go down?
Major changes in usage based on weather.
And that's an every-year kind of thing?
That's correct.
And that hasn't happened since, for quite a number of years.
You want very hot summers, you want very cold winters.
Well, some of us do. Thank you very much.
We're still on the, on the amendment. Councilmember James?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Bill, follow-up question on that. What typically happens when, what has happened when that franchise fee has been estimated and then comes in at a higher rate? What happens to those funds typically?
It's all part of the general fund.
Okay. And so we would have probably seen budget amendments that came to move revenues, franchise fees, revenues to support other programs, divisions, projects within government, or just?
It's all part of the general fund, part of the total budget.
Okay, so it's not captured in any kind of line item that says this is a franchise fee revenue?
Yes, it's recorded as franchisee revenue, just as other revenue lines are, a part of the general fund. EMS fees, parks, franchise fees, the insurance premium tax, the license, property taxes, all of those are contributing revenues to the general fund.
Would you agree that we do have certain revenues that, once they are received, are appropriated for particular things? Is that a correct assumption that I'm making?
We do have that. Usually sanitary sewer is a dedicated fund, urban services is a dedicated fund. These are general fund revenues.
Okay, so this is not, there's nobody expecting or looking at this, saying that we need this in order to be able to do this? It doesn't go towards any right-of-way personnel, it doesn't go towards anything in particular, it just goes back into a general fund pot, and then nobody's expecting, nobody's looking at a percentage higher than the estimate to offset any cost related to anything that they're doing?
Well, you're saying globally anything, and I'm sure that, you know, we want raises, we want to fund the debt service, all those things come out of the general fund. So all revenues combined support all those expectations combined.
Okay. I don't, I'm probably not able to express what I'm trying to ask, because, and maybe I'm just, maybe I'm looking for an answer that I'm not?
Well, if you're asking me if they're dedicated funds, the answer is no.
Okay.
Is that?
It's kind of what I'm asking, dedicated informally, is kind of what I'm asking.
I don't know of informal dedicated.
That doesn't make any, that's an oxymoron, isn't it?
Well, it's a contradiction of terms.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Vice Mayor.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Is there anybody, anybody else on the amendment? Councilmember Feigl?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I wanted to ask another question. Is new growth figured into the projection for the additional franchise fees? Residential growth?
I don't believe we have broken down our projection of franchise fees into that type of component, such as property taxes has that type of a process where you look at new assessments versus growth in existing assessments. We more look at the trends of actual collections and whatever are proposed. So many times when we're, the proposed rate versus the final rate, they're oftentimes different, and a long delay between when it's proposed and when it's actual. So we kind of don't use that proposed rate in trying to guess what's going to be approved by the PSC. So we more look at the conglomerate of actual collections and just project off of that. I'll look here and see if I've misquoted our process.
I think the only thing that I would add to what Bill just said is that part of the thought process when we were developing the budget and when we held at the 3% was taking a conservative look at what the growth would be. Just as with the property tax, you know, we scaled back based on what the growth had been in previous years, anticipating, you know, that the recession was going to come to Lexington. I think that that's the same thing that we did here, you know, just anticipating that we may not see the growth from new residential developments.
Okay, that's what I needed to know, if it was already figured in there. Thank you.
Anyone else? Councilmember McCord?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. My amendment was at 4.2, because I thought that's the number that we, that got us there doing the math. But as we've recalculated, it looks like that number to reach what we need to reach is actually 4.5, and I'm comfortable making that motion to, adding to the amendment, just 4.5, changing the revenue projections for franchise fees. So move.
All right. There's a motion and a second by Councilmember Ellinger. Motion by Councilmember McCord, second by Councilmember Ellinger to amend the motion. All right. Is there discussion on the amendment to the amendment? Hearing none. Let's vote on the amendment to the amendment. All in favor of the amendment, Councilmember McCord, please indicate by voting I electronically. Motion carries. Okay. Everybody didn't? We've got 11 votes here. Has anybody not voted? Wait a minute, wait a minute. I had reset, so maybe, Jeanette, can Chuck get on here?
Yes.
You're on there? Okay, great. All right. Motion carries. I'm trying to reset. Is that, okay, I'll go back to the agenda. All right, now where are we? We're back to the original motion by Councilmember Stenit, right?
I'm voting on that.
Is there more?
More than Stenit did vote.
Mr. Stenit, are you going to vote on that?
Right, you just need to tell him you just already said that.
All right, he said yes. Okay, now we're back on the, we're?
Gordon?
I'm voting on it either.
You did.
Did register.
Thank you.
Okay, we're back to the original motion then. The motion has, Mr. Stenit's motion's been amended to 4.5. Okay. Is there more, more comments on the original motion? Are there any other comments on the original motion? All right, hearing none. All in favor of the motion, please indicate by voting. We're voting on Mr. Stenit's motion. All indicate by voting, by voting I, yes, Councilmember Lawless.
Correct.
Well, we've already voted to do that. We are now voting on Stenit's, Mr. Stenit's motion as amended to 4.5, right?
Yes, that's your right.
Right. So, all right, all clear? Ready to land? Bringing it in? You did register. Yes, you did. This time you registered Ms. Gordon. Hallelujah. All right.
I'm registered.
Yeah, we're down to 1 one hundred, we just delivered 1 hundredth of a percent on the budget. You want to give us an update on where we are? This shows precision by this council, surgical precision.
With the amended changes to the franchise fee, the new fund balance would be 100, it'll go from what was in the mayor's proposed budget of 100,650 to 121,880, so.
Say that out loud, Councilmember Gordon.
Well, that's perfect.
That's pretty good. I don't know how much better you can get than perfect. Councilmember Myers, looks like you want to say something.
Jerry, does this include the money for the infill redevelopment that we talked about last week?
Yes, it would.
Okay, thank you.
What else we need to do?
We have to vote on the revenues. Thank you, Mr. Ellinger.
Vice Mayor, I have a report from the state on the revenues through May, and I felt that it would be valuable information to share with council, not, you know, just to give a general trend of what's happening statewide and how it might have an impact on our local revenues.
Okay.
Do you have any objection to me running that up the flagpole here for a second?
No, it's fine.
Okay, thank you.
Please.
I've got, I've got a letter from the state budget director, Mary Lassiter. I'm going to pass that around for you to take a look at. And I've got a little overhead information that comes out of the letter I was going to put up on the screen. Could you zoom in on the top paragraph up there, please? That's it. I thought that the letters are coming around, but I just wanted to show these data that among the major, these are major tax account or revenue accounts for the state, that the sales and use tax receipts were down 4.2% for the month, but for the year, they were only down 2 tenths of 1%. What this shows is that retail sales activity has been declining steeply, and so we're, you know, they were up for, we're down 4.2% for the month, they were only down 2% for the year. So you can see that the sales have been tailing off. Corporate income taxes at 8.8 million, that's a negative number. That reflected tax refunds. But corporate taxes for the year were down 38.8%. Individual income tax collection fell 6.2% in May, but it's down 3.7% for the 11 months year-to-date. So you could see that revenues for May were down substantially in that category. Property tax collections were, decreased 1.8% for the month, but were up 1.9% through the first 11 months of the year. I wouldn't consider that too much, because tax collections vary, they're, you know, they're cyclical, because they're billed out at the, in October, November, and they are up, because your value of real estate's not going to decline rapidly. And then cigarette revenues were up because of the And then cigarette revenues were up because of the tax increase that we had. And coal severance was up because coal mining is, with the higher oil prices, has been very, you know, been increasing year-to-date. Now, if you go back and look at the next page, which is not going to be on the overhead because it's fairly small type, you'll notice that on the very top line, this is on page that says Kentucky State Revenue, General Fund Revenue. If you look at the very top, you'll see that the tax receipts for, all tax receipts for May were down 3%, and for the year, they were down 1.8%. I merely share this with you because even though Lexington is doing very well, we have the lowest unemployment rate in the state, we do have a lot of economic activity here. We are still experiencing a decline, which is reflected in our May report that came in last week. And I just want to, I'm not suggesting that we change our budget estimates, but I think we need to be ever vigilant as we go into the first few months of the next fiscal year to watch our revenue. And then we may need to make some adjustments if our revenues continue to track in the same direction the state has been going in. That's all I have for you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Lane. Councilmember Lawless?
Yeah, I agree with Councilmember Lane. I'm troubled by the projections we received last week that were $13 million short of what the mayor's budget.
No, it was, no, we were off, we were off $1 million in the, in the, in the corporate income tax number from the previous year, and we were off $1 million year-to-date in payroll tax. So cumulative, I think, Bill, wasn't it 2 million overall? Roughly 2 from the trending number from last year? That's outside that unusual 900,000.
I didn't bring the...
Income tax?
Excuse me, the slides. But Mayo 09, year-to-date, versus Mayo 08, year-to-date, which is kind of comparable to what we have here. I don't have it with my... Okay.
You're getting praise up here, Chris, for having that reservoir of data. I think what Councilmember Lawless is looking for, you're going to the, yeah?
Yeah. If you want to compare to what the state's report was, we were up a half a percent in withholdings, we're down 0.82% year-to-date in net profits compared to last year, virtually flat in insurance and up 9.8 franchise fees. So the total of the four largest categories in the general fund, year-to-date 09 over year-to-date 08 is, we're up $2 million. If you compare that to budget, we are below budget.
Okay. I don't know, maybe I was in Oz, but weren't your projections for FY '10?
FY '10? It's the 278. It's the projection total general fund dollars for FY '10 is 278.8, mayor's proposed budget.
Okay.
I think...
Okay.
Can I help just a second? Perhaps?
Yeah, I'm just confused.
I think maybe what you're thinking is the same thing that I'm thinking, and I'm a little confused too. My recollection was that we were trending numbers from April and May, 09 compared to 08 revenues in withholding income, that is withholding the payroll tax and the corporate income tax. When you take those together, net of that unusual item, the 900,000 corporate income deal, that tax or that income, that revenue, that we were, we were down a couple of million dollars. I thought, and where is that?
Please go forward.
And I'm, you missed something.
I believe this is the slide that you're referring to.
There we go, right.
Now, instead of comparing to same period last year, I was showing that our current projected year-end collections for these four accounts is below what we had previously projected for these four accounts. Is that?
Right.
So it all depends on what comparisons we're making. I was trying to show you the one that would compare to the state's year-over-year, but I did present the fact that we have reduced our projections in three out of those four categories, and it's because we do see the softness of the economy affecting our revenues right now, as Councilmember Lane is pointing out that the state is experiencing.
And wasn't there a FY '10 new projection of a considerable decrease in expected revenues in all categories from 278 to?
No, ma'am. Next slide, please. The slide that you're referring to is I was showing that our originally adopted budget was 273.8. The projection where FY '09 would end that was made in March was 270. The one we're now projecting for FY '09 is 267.
Okay.
The mayor's proposed budget for 2010, as presented, is 278.8.
So... With the soft economy and the state projections, how do we get from 267 to 278?
Hold on just a second. We, we base the 2010 revenue projections to say that the current economic recession
Right.
will turn around in 2010. So we were projecting that six months of the year would be trending up rather than 12 months trending down. And what we've been trying to see is when is this economic recession going to truly hit Lexington? And what we've seen is one month up, one month down, one month up, one month down. And then we did see two months that were down. So now we're asking, is it here? And every time we do this analysis, we see timing differences. The vice mayor referred to unusual events that were identified that skew the numbers either one way or the other. Mary Fister did an additional analysis looking at actual payments in the withholding category, trying to, trying to take away the noise of cash flow and timing differences and unusual events to try to look at the core payments. So, not to try to make this too complicated, but instead of saying, when did we finally put the money in the bank? What was the money for? So your withholdings that you paid us, whenever you paid us for April, whether that came in in May or June, compared to the withholdings you paid us for the same period last year, how does that compare? And so we saw that for two months, February and March? This, this is not cash flow. This is trying to match...
Right.
...what the payroll withholdings were for that month worked, regardless of when we received it. So what we're trying to do is identify whether we have slow pay, when they pay us, or low pay and erosion in the withholdings, trying to get to the underlying economics there. And, and you can see that we had some ups and downs. October, November is explained again, unusual events. You have three pay periods for major employers in one month last year versus the following month this year. So November spiked up because of that comparison, November spiked down because of that comparison. December showed a negative 1%. Then January to January was up 5.1. February and March were down. But then when we analyzed our May receipts received in May, four payroll worked in April, it's up 3.3. So we have yet to see a true bottoming out or erosion in our payroll base. It's very confusing. We expected to see it. February, March started to show that it was here. Then there seemed to be good news in April. We're chomping at the bit to analyze June payments, to analyze May payroll. The, the other thing, I went to the same site Councilmember Lane did, and the state budget office puts out economic briefs each Friday. And the one dated June 5th was the only one that was available and posted yet. And they talked about National Association of Business Economic Outlook, and this is prognostication. It's, you know, their opinion is more or less better than yours or mine.
If anybody had the exact right answer, they'd be...
They'd be millionaires.
They'd be billionaires.
The panel of 45 economists said it expects the economic growth will rebound in the second half of 2009. However, the group still expects to see a decline in second quarter economic activity. Almost three out of four survey respondents expect the recession will end by the third quarter of '09. 19% predict the turnaround won't come until the fourth quarter. 7% say it may not come until early 2010. None of the panelists expected the recession to continue past the first quarter of next year. That and a dollar will get you a cup of coffee.
Right.
But, but it's, it's what we have available in order for us to decide, is the cup half-empty, half-full? Have we hit bottom? Do we still have it to expect?
I guess my question is, last week, if I understood correctly, you came and said we have new projected...
'09 numbers.
'09 numbers, which were several million dollars lower than...
Before.
Right. And that the, the recommendation by the administration was for us to go on and pass a budget with the 278 million projection and then reassess at the first quarter. Is that correct?
That is correct. That's what I said.
So, so that's kind of what we're moving forward doing at this point. And my question is, and I don't know who, if anybody can answer it, is if we pass this at the 278 million, knowing that things aren't looking as bright as we had hoped for FY ' '09, that after that first quarter, will the council be involved in adjusting this budget? Or do we pass this budget and then any reductions in the budget are done solely by the administration? I know if things go up and there's an adjustment, a budget amendment to add money to our general fund or to any project, that has to come before the council. But what happens if there is a shortfall and after the first quarter, it looks like, you know, things aren't as rosy as we thought? Are we gonna get another bite at this apple? Or is it gonna be solely on the shoulders and the will or pleasure of the administration to cut the budget as they see fit? Do people understand what I'm saying? Because prior, in prior years, my understanding is, you know, positions don't get filled because the administration watches the budget and says, oh, we have a shortfall, so we're gonna put a freeze on hiring, or we're gonna do this, we're gonna do that. They only come to us if there is an increase, a budget amendment to increase the budget. So in passing this at the recommendation of the administration at the $278 million, are we, after the first quarter, when those new analyses come out, are we going through a, are we gonna have an opportunity as a council to go through this process and adjust the budget accordingly? Or are we just handing it over and what happens, happens? People understand my question?
My, my answer to you is yes.
Yes, what?
Exactly.
There were like three questions, I'm sorry. Yes, the administration does it, or we do it?
And it's both. And let me explain why I say both. The budget is passed by council. Changes to the budget have to and require council approval. Management of the budget is the administration's responsibility. Informing the council of what management is doing is management's responsibility. For instance, if there is a hiring freeze that is reported to council, headcount reports how many open positions is incorporated into what is reported to council. Now, if you want more information than totals, we can certainly furnish that. Again, I would remind you that if you pass a $279 million budget, because that's what's on the table right now, the largest single expense category is salaries.
Sure.
And we have said going forward in the mayor's proposed budget that we are not funding X number approved positions. And, and we listed, you know, that total, there's a schedule in the mayor's proposed budget of, of the total number that are not being funded. That is how, one of the major, many of the components of this budget, we'll be tracking that throughout the year and reporting that to council. If we have a significant decrease in revenue, in my opinion, this budget is tight. We've tried to squeeze wherever we can squeeze and root out wherever we can find additional revenues. So anything that we have to do to respond to significant economic downturns are going to be painful and have to be presented to council for approval.
So through budget amendments or just reported to us, for instance, hiring freeze, say in code enforcement?
And that's what I'm saying, it's in both categories.
Okay.
There's, there's management of the budget and there are changes to the budget. Depending on the severity, one migrates from one to the other.
Okay. Councilmember Gordon, you're up next. Maybe you have, can somebody help me with this? Does somebody understand what I'm talking about here?
Well, you're...
Councilmember Lawless, I think that, you know, if there's a material, if there's an anticipated material change in revenue, then administration would have to bring forth a budget amendment to change that revenue. And because, you know, we, we have to keep a balanced budget, we would have to bring forth with that change in revenue estimate, a change in an expense category that you all would either approve or disapprove. So I would, you know, I would see that if there is material change, that you all would have to be active in the approval of that change from a budgetary perspective. If, if it's not material, then, you know, I would anticipate that administration would try to, to manage through it until, until it becomes evident that it is, you know, gonna be a material thing. So, does that make sense? I think, kind of. One of the things that I wanted to add to what Bill had said was, if you go back to Bill's Page 3 presentation, where it shows that we're down, or that the difference right now in employee withholdings is only up 0.5%, we all have to remember that the 08 numbers included an extra payroll. So, and this is all cash to cash, so we included more, we, we, you know, collected more in '08 because we had one extra payroll. And if you look at the schedule that kind of takes that out, you can see that we are, you know, we are trending up until February and March. The, the challenging thing is in April, you know, is April up? The challenging thing is in April, you know, is April up because April's up, or is April up because there was layoffs and people had payouts of their vacation and sick because they've been laid off? That's, you know, that's the dangerous thing here. But, you know, historically, we are seeing prior to February, strong revenues in our withholdings compared to prior year, when you take out that extra payroll.
Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Well, I'm very comfortable with what we have done here today. And Councilmember Stenit worked his magic and came up with $279,000, $279,30,775. And Jerry, I was going to ask you if we're scheduled to ratify the budget today, to put it on the docket. And so, thinking forward, will you be cleaning up these numbers between now and 3:00 so that we can see what we've actually done today and how the numbers work?
Yes, I'll work with budgeting and whoever on to get you some number. Also, I hope to have a motion that I'll give to the Vice Mayor to request the motion to be passed to adopt the mayor's proposed budget with amended changes.
And I think we still, if I recall, have we, we still have not adopted revenues. Is that correct?
Well, if you vote on-
I mean officially.
Right. If you've, at this point, if you vote on accepting what you all have done indirectly, you have, because the fund balance, the revised fund balance includes the revenue for projections.
So you don't think we need to have an official motion?
I think you need to vote on, you know, accepting the mayor's proposed budget with the amendment, with amended changes. And that will, at this point, get it all, I think.
Okay. Well, I'm very comfortable with what we've done, and so I'd like to go ahead and offer that motion to accept the mayor's proposed budget with the changes that the Committee of the Whole has made during its meetings.
There's a motion, and there's a second, to accept the mayor's proposed budget with the amendments adopted by the council of the whole. All right, floor is available for discussion on the motion. Councilmember Stenit, is it? Yeah, I'm now looking at my monitor for, that Councilmember Stenit, Martin, Ellinger, and Myers. Councilmember Stenit.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I definitely support Councilmember Gordon's motion on several issues that come to mind. As one, we do have the $4 million fund balance that we talked about earlier. Whether it's four or 3 million, we're going to have to debate that later on after this budget anyway this year. Second of all, we have the economic contingency fund at $13.5 million approximately in there, should there be another economic downturn or July and August come in well below. The third point is, we know for a fact that we will not spend exactly $279,35,000 next year. One, because we won't hire everyone we plan to hire July 1. So there's going to be some, a little bit of cushion. I'm not going to say hundreds of millions or thousands of dollars, but there'll be some there, assuming no other expenses like utilities go up. So I think I am very comfortable with this number based on, based definitely on those three points, and I'll definitely support Councilmember Gordon's motion. Thank you.
Councilmember Martin.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. This is a moving target, and I think, I just am very impressed with Bill, Mary, and their team, and the quality of work that they put into this. It is a moving target. This is a guess right now. And in a period of possible declining revenues, you know, we will watch this through, extra diligently, through a period such as this. When we got any possibly increasing revenues, we don't have to watch so closely, but when we have decreasing revenues, we just got to keep an eye on it. As Councilmember Law has indicated, we need to watch this through the process and maybe have monthly updates and to see how we're doing in the funds. But I've just been very impressed at their professionalism, and I know that this will continue through the fiscal year 10. We'll have many more sessions like this to talk about where the numbers are and how we're doing vis-à-vis the projections we've looked at today. These are just guesses today, but they, I think, are very educated guesses based on the best available information that can be had at this moment in time. And so I support the motion to adopt this and with, I think, all of our understanding that we're just going to keep an eye on this and see how things go. That's what this year is going to be about. Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Councilmember Ellinger.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I'm going to take the opposite approach. I think this is irresponsible. We had our estimates coming from our budgeting folks who said that we, in March, were supposed to be growing at 3%. Now we're estimating at a 4.2% growth when our revenues are decreasing. We should be looking at decreasing our estimates and not increasing them by a million, at 1.2%. So I'd say we should set our revenues at $276 million, not $279 million. I think that's irresponsible, and we're going to have to be cutting. And I think you take it, do it on the front end, and you don't do it on the back end after a couple of months and say, well, we know we're going to have to do it. We're setting a budget up that's going to fail.
Councilmember Myers.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. With respect to what we did today in terms of raising the revenue projection for franchise fees, I'm in agreement with that, because I think it's clear that those fees are going to go up and we're going to draw in more revenue. With regard to the other revenue streams increasing that projection, I'm not in agreement with that. And I guess, Mr. O'Meara, could you come up? And you may have said something today with that last spreadsheet, wasn't really a spreadsheet, but the last chart that you put up there. You may be changing what you said last week, and so I want to ask you. Because the last week or the week before, you were asked a question, and you said, the revenue director, as a revenue director, you don't believe in this number, the 3%. But as a commissioner, you do support that number. And I'm, and maybe I'm not getting that correctly, so if I'm not, I want you to correct me, because I don't want to-
I would, I would, do not remember making a statement like that. I did say, as a revenue director, I'm a very conservative person, and I look at revenue projections in a conservative manner. As total finance, I'm looking at the total from everywhere, which means we're not going to spend everything we're going to spend that's projected.
So let me-
As both people, I have foot in both doors. I am recommending to go with the 279 now, 278.8 plus the $200,000, acknowledging just exactly like Councilmember Martin said, we're going to have to watch this very closely. And here's the choice I see that we're making. Do we want to make very, in very short amount of time, very deep, not pleasant cuts in our budget? Or do we want to wait until we have full evidence that those are required and do them at a later date? Now, waiting, it has implications and has risk. But if you, if you want to make very hard choices, I would do it with more time and analysis than less time.
Okay. So what do you think about that projection, though? Because moving it to the 2.89 million, everybody's agreeing with that, because what we've done is moved the franchise fee, that franchise fee, projection. Everybody's okay with that, because it's pretty much guaranteed that's going to come in. But the other part of that, before we do that, what is your thought on, you put another little chart up there. What I want to know is, based on the work that you guys did here, how comfortable are you, let's take out the franchise fee increase, and let's take it back down to the 2.89, or 276. How comfortable are you that your analysis right here makes you comfortable with the revenues coming in? We're talking about the payroll tax, business license, all those other things, not counting the franchise fee. Because out of the four funds that you put up there, franchise fee is the one that we're projecting to go up the most, it's also the smallest fund. So how comfortable are you that this work right here shows that we're going to meet our number at the end of the year?
Well, the word comfortable, I'm going to avoid. What I'm going to say is, is that we're predicting, based on how we think the future is going to be. And so I look at economists, the leading ones, and they say it's going to turn around, they can't decide when. Is it going to happen sooner, or is it going, as in October? Is it going to happen next March? We are, we built the 2.89, which is now 279, assuming that we would turn around December 4. And that we would not experience large decreases. If, I don't have it with me, I may have it, but it's a big, busy spreadsheet. We went and looked at withholdings and-
Can I, can I stop you for a second?
Yes.
That statement you just made, you built the budget based on those revenues coming in, but then when you had, I think it was the April numbers, that caused you concern. What I'm really asking is, is this analysis, did this analysis turn around that concern?
It mitigated that concern, because what we saw was payroll for April of this year compared to payroll for April of last year is up 3.3. That means people are paying us slower, but they still have a solid payroll base. That's what that April number makes me hope, gives me hope to mean. It could be the opposite, as Mary Fister said. It could be the anomaly from payouts from mass layoffs. I have not read about mass layoffs in Fayette County. Large, large chunks of people being laid off, such as we have read in other parts of the state and the country. We do have people that are, that have lost their jobs and laid off. We do have an increase in unemployment. Those are all documented. How severe is it going to affect our revenues is what we're trying to ascertain, and we can't, we do not see an evident trend yet, and that's why we want to wait and see more data.
Okay. Oh, Mary's coming up with something.
We also have pulled, just so you know, we've pulled from the state the wages covered by unemployment for the Fayette County, just Fayette County, not the MSA. And we were seeing a 3%, 4% growth back at the time that we were proposing the budget. Now that's, that has trickled down to a 2% growth, you know, as far as increase in the average wages, one year to the next, for wages covered by unemployment. So, you know, we are still seeing an increase. What I'd like to point out to everybody, if you go back to Bill's previous, the slide, I'm sorry to keep, okay. If you go back to this and you look at the May FY '08 number, the $135,242, that number includes 27 payrolls. This year, we only, the 235,978 only, is only going to include 26 payrolls. So we really, the numbers, the flat receipts are showing that we're up 0.5%, but we're really up something higher than that. And it's really hard for the Division of Revenue to ascertain exactly how much we're up, because, you know, they've got such an antiquated system, they can't just push a button and say, tell me how much revenue is up on payers that pay biweekly. So, so the employee withholding, when you look at the flat receipts, it doesn't look that great. It looks like we're down. And that, and, you know, on the cover, it looks like what Councilwoman Ellinger is saying, but when you dig into the details, you can actually see that when you look by payer, pay period by pay period, we are seeing an increase in what they're paying us.
Since you referred to me, can I ask you a question then?
Yeah.
With this information, when you predicated this budget then in March, did you know that we had 27 pay periods and we don't have 26?
Yes.
And we budgeted for 3% growth, and now we're budgeting for a 4.2% growth, with knowing our revenues are down? Can you tell me why that was not an issue then and it is, it is now?
Revenues were not down when you, when you took out the impact of a 27th payroll.
Were you arguing?
When we were projecting the, when we were projecting the mayor's proposed budget, when you take out the impact of the 27th payroll, revenues were not down.
But didn't you, didn't you go ahead and make that estimation in March when you did that?
Yeah, and if you can look here, you, these are, you know, the 27th payroll that we received in '08 was actually received in July for June payrolls. So this is showing all apples to apples as far as number of pay periods. And you can see, we would have been making the estimate with January data. You can see that we had a 5% growth in July to July, 1% in August, 3.1%. The October and November, in October, we had three pay periods this year, so we were up 22%. In November, we were actually down 13% because there was three pay periods in last November. But you can see that until February, we were trending positive, pay period to pay period. So February and March was the first time that we saw two negative pay period payments from our employers out there in a row. April appears to have recovered. Did April recover because things are back on track? Or did April recover because people realized they're losing money and they laid people off? We don't know the answer to that, and we won't.
Okay, so we're not knowing that answer, then how can we, in good faith, raise our estimates from 3% growth, is which we're going to do, to 4.2% growth? Because that's what we're doing now.
We did not raise our estimates. The increase to the 4.2 is just a function because we're lowering what we're anticipating to come in in 2009.
But in order to make that $279 million, we have to make it 4.2%. Do we not, instead of 3%?
If our-
That's what our growth is going to be. That's what we're estimating our growth is.
Yes, sir. If our, if our estimates for '09 hold true, then it would require a 4.2% growth.
So we're increasing our estimates from 3% to 4.2 with what?
If our '09 estimates hold true, yes.
And that's, as of last month, we just got those in?
Right.
So we're within a month of knowing exactly where we're going to be. Better than what we were in, in March, when we initially did that. So actually, it's going down, but we're raising them.
Well, but I would argue with you that, that we, you know, we had projected a 3% growth, and April is showing a 3.3% growth. So if April holds true-
It's still below 4.2.
Well, the 4.2 figure is off of a projected '09.
Do you have by chance what our, our growth for revenues since probably 1980 and show us that, that figure? Because that's when we had our worst recession. We had that at one point, you showed us way back when.
Vice Mayor, this is out of order, because we have a list of people waiting to speak, and-
Well, she brought my name up, and when she, when she referred to me that I'm just going to back to this-
We have a five-minute time limit that we need to enforce.
That's fine.
Our council report to per debate.
Put the clock on me, then. I'm ready.
Let's, let's just take a breath here. Let's get this answered, okay? And then-
I think this is an important answer that-
Well, yeah, it is. But we're going to, there are other people that are going to want to talk about the same issue.
And I think it's important that we do it when we are actually in a recession, not when we're in positive growth times.
So you can see that this goes back to 2001, and you can see the percents there of what we've been averaging as our growths.
That's great, but really, what we, what we're referring to at this time is not what happened in 2001. What we're looking at is probably what happened in the recession of 1980, and what was the growth patterns in that time. And I think you need to go back further and look at and chart that more than just what's happened here in the last few years. And I think that's going to be a little more reflective of what we can anticipate.
I think what we have seen back in the 80s, and what we've seen when we hit any recession, is that the net profits decline, because employers are apt to keep people on salary even when their profits are declining, to see, to try to wait out the storm. So we see a decline in net profits first, historically, and then, and at that time, when net profits decline, we normally see a growth in employee withholdings, because people lay people off and their vacation and sick and so on and so forth is paid out. And so typically, the first year when the recession hits us, we see the decline in net profits, and we see a growth in employee withholdings. And then in the subsequent years, when we actually see the decline in net profit, or the decline in employee withholdings. Because employers typically will keep people on staff until the last possible moment.
If you can't find this information now, it'd be fine if you just sent me or sent the council for the last, since 1984, for the last 30 years, what the percentage growth- the council for the last, since 1984, for the last 30 years, what the percentage growth of revenues were. And then it can give us a better feel of what we can expect.
Okay.
Because I'm sure there's going to be years that's going to be up over 4.2, but I'm sure there's going to be years that's going to be below that.
Okay, and you want the employee withholdings?
I want our, I want our revenue growth from annually.
Total revenue?
Yes, because that's what we're, that's what we're looking at here.
Okay, you can do that.
And that way, I won't yield any more of my five minutes.
Councilmember James.
Thank you. I, I have a comment, but just to respond a little bit to what's been going back and forth is-
All right, I'll come back there.
One of the things that I've learned about this recession compared to others is that I don't know, and I, I didn't necessarily follow politics back when I was in, you know, middle school very much, or whatever grade I was in then. But one thing I've heard and, is that this recovery seems to be much quicker than the previous recessions that have occurred before. There's more of an active effort. And we do see some rebounding a little bit more quickly than previous. So, I, I don't know if there's a best look at looking back historically, if there's going to be something we say, well, we have to look at emulating the recession from the eighties, because that's exactly what's going to happen, it'll follow that trend. The tactics are different now. And the way in which we learn, you're supposed to learn from how you responded before, so you wouldn't typically do the same things. It's just like your regular household budget. If you know that a certain thing hits you real bad, you would prepare for that and your response would be different and make you in a less exposed way, once you hit that recession. So, I know now with that recession that happened before, anything, we're all preparing financially different for a possible recession that will happen. So, if we've not been through it before, we're going to be different this time. So, just historical data, I don't know if it's relevant and you can't predict behavior within numbers as well. And that's really tough to do. So, basically, this is just kind of a shot in the dark. And I think what everyone has said is right. We've got to watch it closely, be aware of it. So, my comment that I initially was going to make was, Councilmember Lawless spoke on, oh, how do we know if the administration decides to do something different than what we've put in the budget? How do we know that? And we know every week. We get our packets on Thursdays to prepare for our Tuesdays. We've got to read those packets. We've got to read the information. We get our work docket, and then we get a docket and budget amendments on Thursday nights. We've got to read those, read that information. And then we've got to call to question anything that we are concerned about. If we see something within that budget amendment, something on the work session agenda, and something on the docket, that we are not for sure about, we have council committees that can deal with those issues and get the data if they question, if knows nobody to come to the mic, or if the questions cannot be answered within an amount of time that we feel like is appropriate at that setting. But we have an avenue. So, we get the budget from the mayor, we go through the budget and make our amendments, we pass the budget, the administration makes decisions, and then they have a blue sheet, they have an administrative process. We don't, our legislative process is the council meetings. So, anything related to this budget that we're passing today, we should see that it's, it's the, the transactions regarding that budget happen within, all of it's in front of us. There's nothing that's hidden. It's very obvious to us, if you read the packet and read the information. So, that's what I'm, that's what I'm saying, is this has been a, a very strenuous process going through the budget. But guess what? It's not over. The budget process continues throughout the year, as we look at amend, budget amendments and our council work session dockets. Everything that we do, all of our business transactions, everything that's supposed to have a match that we've seen come forward, we should be looking for that grant match to come forward. We've got to be aware of it. It's a lot to stay on top of, but we can do it. I feel, I feel hopeful that we, as a council, can come together and look at the packets, talk to each other, communicate, and make our legislative process work. Because this, this ain't it. It continues throughout the entire fiscal year. So, that's what I'm, I'm kind of urging council members to do, is don't feel like this is our only time to give input about this budget. We give input about the budget every single week, or we're supposed to, on Tuesdays and on Thursdays, and at our standing committees. So, please be sure that we, and our oversight committees, please be sure that we are working diligently to do that and don't feel as if we are, hands are tied, because they're not. We have the key. We have the key, we have the ability to untie those, untangle those knots, unravel those ropes, and make it clear. And we have the, we have the authority to do that, given to us by our constituents. And we have the obligation to do that by the taxpayers, who pledge that we are, charge us with reading that information and passing the ultimate legislation related to that budget. So, I apologize if this sounds like grandstanding, it's not. It just clearly is that we do have an ability to, it's not micromanaging, it's working along with the administration to make sure that we're making the best choices with our taxpayers' dollars and with this budget that we've approved. Thank you.
Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. As the maker of the motion, I did want to respond to a couple of things and ask Bill O'Meara and Mary Fister a question. I don't think that any of us up here want to be irresponsible. And if I thought this was an irresponsible budget, I would not have made the motion. The budget is a framework. That is what it is. We all know that week in and week out, as Councilmember James said, we change the budget every year for the, since 1973, I'm sure, and before. And so, I think it is a responsible framework for us to go forward. And we shouldn't forget that we have Budget and Finance Committee every month, where we see the revenue and expense report. That is our big control, is we get those reports. And so, we have an opportunity in a bigger level to make changes if we have concerns. There have been two years in the past 11 where I voted no on a budget, because I thought it was not a good budget. But I intend to support this motion. And I know that Bill O'Meara, on June the 9th, when we talked about our revenue update, I believe you said, because I wrote it down, that our top 30 employers through May had increased net profits. And I wrote that down. It's that payroll, payroll, which to me says that there is a little bit of an uptick, perhaps. I guess I would ask you, not to put you on the spot, but if we pass this motion, are you going to have trouble sleeping tonight? Or do you think that we can, it is a doable budget with $279 million revenue estimate? I, I don't want to put you on the spot, but I do want to know if it makes you nervous.
I'm always nervous, Councilmember.
Okay, well, then that puts it in perspective. Okay, that, that puts it in perspective.
I am not going, I am going to be able to go to sleep tonight.
Okay.
Was your first question. Am I worried about this summer? You betcha. Just like I have been since December.
Yes.
And so, I want to see what's a trend, what we can explain, what's confusing. But, but I guess my moment to reiterate, I don't, the numbers don't tell me that we have to cut $3 million worth of payroll. The numbers don't tell me that we have to cut $3 million worth of programs today. We may.
Yes.
In, in October, I, I may be here wringing my hands, saying, we've got to do this. I don't see the numbers telling me that we have to make that kind of choice today.
Well, I appreciate all your hard work and Mary and Elizabeth and all the folks who've worked on this. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Lane.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I wanted to say, I'm voting for the mayor's budget for these reasons. I think we need to evaluate the economic trends in Lexington for several more months before we determine what to do. Are we having a long-term decline, or is this just a dip in our revenue on a short-term basis? If the revenues continue to trend downward, we have a number of options. We can reduce the size of government, which is a, a serious decision to make. Or we can use our rainy day fund. And I would prefer to use a rainy day fund if it's just a short-term dip, because that's why we have put that plan into motion, so we don't have to adjust the size of government for a short-term period of time. We can use the rainy day money to help us through. But we need to be vigilant, to keep tabs on what the economy's doing for the next few months, so that we can adjust rapidly and respond to the market conditions in Lexington. But I'd like just close by saying that Lexington is the state's best economy and we have a very dynamic city here. Employment levels are highest in the state. So, if anybody has a chance to work through this, we have the best chance. Thank you.
Councilmember, Councilmember McCord.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. You know, it's been said a couple of different times, a couple of different ways, but really in a, in a place where no one of our generation has ever been before, and times are different, and you make the best decisions based upon the information you have at your disposal. And the reason I seconded this motion is, is that I think, based on the, the information we had, have at our disposal, that we are making as wise a decisions as we can. You know, one of the things that I want to point out, two things, one about the administration and one about this council. First off to the administration, I, I really want to compliment you, everybody in the administration, but especially Bill, some of the work that you've been doing over the years behind the scenes. Bottom line is, we didn't know what our numbers were a couple of years ago. And with the PeopleSoft debacle and STARS and everything else, we had no ability to have a grasp on, on anything and to be vigilant about our numbers. And with a lot of work that's behind the scenes, that frankly, constituents and residents will never know or appreciate or may never care about, we now are in a position where we can make good decisions. And I want to compliment every single person in the administration that worked on that and people on council that, that worked through that. The other thing is, is that, Councilmember Lane, when we got on council five years ago, you started trumpeting the short, the very small economic contingency fund we had. We had what, maybe $4 million in there five years ago when we started. We've more than tripled that. We were at about 13 million. All because that you kept trumpeting that and saying, we really need to put money away for a rainy day. Councilmember Ellinger made a comment as he passed by, this is the worst recession since the Great Depression. And so, okay, he's right. Then we've got money to work with for an economic contingency, because this council had enough foresight a couple of years ago to put money away and start socking it away in our savings account. And last year, we made some decisions, because we thought some things might be very unique, that we put that on pause, or we did, we, we suspended how we did that. But we made decisions at the time with the information that we had. And I think that, Councilmember James, you bring up a great point, and that is that we should be vigilant 12 months out of the year. I, I think we're in a position to actually do that now, much better than we were even a year ago. And I think that we need to be vigilant, as Councilmember Myers says, about things other than just the numbers. A lot about the policy issues. And is, is, has been said so often, we need to hold those accountable that are in charge of our economic development and, and keeping that vibrancy that we've got here in this, in this city. But I would just contend that during this budget process, it's one thing to say, I'm against this or that, or, and we all have different reasons why we vote different ways on, on budget items. But it's one of those things where I also watch who has brought forward cuts and ideas for cuts. It's one thing to say, I don't agree with this, but it's another to say, here's where I see the opportunity. And if folks aren't willing to do that, then, you know, to me, that's, that's taking an easy way out. And yeah, I can stand up here and, and say, this makes me nervous, or that makes me nervous. But at the end of the day, we've been put up here to make decisions, and we make the best ones we can at the time, and I appreciate everybody through this very difficult process. It's probably been the toughest one that I've been involved with in five years, but I'm very grateful for the work that we've all done. Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember McCord. Councilmember Martin, then Councilmember-
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Nobody here has a crystal ball, and we make the best educated guesses we can. If, if half the people think the economy's going to go up and half the people think the economy's going to go down, when the economy goes down, doesn't mean people are right and wrong, it means the economy went down. So, I think no one here knows the future. We, we make the best guess we can. We plan for the future, we have contingency funds. Unless there are specific budget recommendations to make at this time, we will pass this budget and we'll come back in July, and come back in August, and then come back in September, and look at this again, and watch the numbers. It's easy to call it irresponsible, but it's harder to find the, the type of, of money that would, would take and reduce all risk. There's, there's no way we can reduce all the risk right now. What we can do is continue to watch the budget and continue to watch the numbers and plan for the best. We don't know what's ahead, but we're going to keep watch. Thank you, Vice Mayor.
And I shortchanged Councilmember Myers a little while ago, when he had the floor and seated and yielded to Councilmember Ellinger, so I got to apologize to him and give him back to the, the floor back to you.
I'll, I'll yield my remaining two minutes to-
Oh, thank you so much. You appreciate it.
I've got plenty of time. Thank, thank you, Vice Mayor. And actually, Ms. Gordon asked Mr. O'Meara the final question that I was trying to get to, when I had that line of questioning, was really, do you have heartburn over this number of 4.2? That's really where I was wanting to go. And it sounds like you don't have, so I'm going to, I'm going to trust your non-heartburn stomach. But the questions that I asked a few weeks ago got back to some of the points that were being made by different people, which was, at the end of the day, what, what reasonable expectation does the council have and the citizens have, that what the council passes in this budget takes place? And that was a question, you know, we had a debate with, with the Chief of Staff a few weeks ago, and, and Commissioner Law is going to answer some questions, but it was referred to committee, so he's going to respond in the committee. And we've heard different commentary about the fact that we have oversight over the budget and when things happen, budget amendments have to be made, et cetera, et cetera. But, but what we don't have, it's my understanding, when we pass the budget, is the ability to then say that everything that's in the budget is supposed to happen. And so, with that, what my concern is, is that when we look at some of the positions that we put in this budget, like the auditors and the code enforcement officers, that, you know, Mr. O'Meara said, let's not make a rash decision now, let's wait three months out, or 90 days out, three months, and see where things have shifted, if they have shifted, and if we need to make some adjustments, make them at that time. I'm in favor of that with this caveat. At that point in time, we've passed the budget and we don't have the same ability to make changes that we have today. At the, at the same time, though, when we pass this budget, we don't have the ability in passing a budget to mandate the things that I'm concerned about not happening. And that is the hiring of those certain positions. So, what I'm going to do today during work session, well, I guess I need to do it, I guess it doesn't really matter if it's done with or after the budget is passed, is to bring forth a resolution or an ordinance, whichever way the law department says it has to happen, authorizing and directing the mayor to hire the people that we put in the budget with respect to the code enforcement officers and the auditors. And I don't know if anybody else has positions that they put in the budget that they want to see that happen to. But my concern is not micromanaging, it's simply that those services and those programs that the citizens have asked for, that we voted unanimously to provide, won't happen unless those positions are filled. Passing a budget doesn't direct the mayor to fill those positions. The auditors have been in the budget for a couple of years now, but have not been hired. I want to make sure that doesn't happen this year. So, I'm going to vote with this motion to approve this budget, but I'm also going to bring a resolution or ordinance, whichever one it is, authorizing and directing the mayor to hire certain positions that are in this budget. And that can, that kind of goes along with what Councilmember McCord said, is, you know, bring solutions to the table. And so, that's a solution that I'm going to bring. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Myers. I'm seeing no one else on the monitor. We ready for a vote? Vote on the motion. Councilmember Gordon, the Councilmember Gordon's motion is to accept the mayor's proposed budget as amended by the council recommendations. All in favor of the motion, please indicate by voting aye, and all those opposed by voting no. All right? Motion carries. Do we have anything? I'd want to, you know, as a comment by the chair, very quickly, just reinforce what many councilmembers have already- , uh, many councilmembers have already said, um, that thanks to the administration, um, everyone who worked on it, Mary, Bill, y'all staff, um, mayor, mayor's staff, all the commissioners, council's office, Jerry, thank you. Thank you, sir, for hanging in with us. All the, all those who supported the staff, the council aides that supported the links. There's a lot of heavy lifting that went on in this process. It's often we don't acknowledge that ourselves and give us a little bit of a pat on the back for all these marathon meetings we've been in. Bill, just a commentary on what you had to say about being nervous all the time. It reminded me Warren Buffett said, "Take care of the downside, the upside will take care of itself." But it's worthwhile, I, I think too, at least my observation in this conversation today and the conversations we've been having, it's worthwhile to reflect on the commitment that each of you all have for this. I'm not being solicitous. I mean this when I say this. It's not the cliche. It's not gratuitous, you know? It, it, every time I hear one of these conversations, I see, um, you know, in even the debate, you know, we're really operating at a very precise level here. We're talking about a budget where the debate is over 1.2%. And some might argue that's, you know, really getting into the weeds and so forth, but it also, if you look at it another way, it reflects the commitment and the precision that we're committed to. And, um, to layer on a little bit of what council Myers was saying, it also translates into the expectations and perhaps the higher expectations that we've all been talking about in the course of these budget meetings, the higher expectations we have with respect to implementation and execution in every dimension and accountability for that. And so, I just want to thank you all for that, acknowledge it. I know everybody else has thanked each other. And we're ready to, I suppose then, to move on. Is that right? For those who are really good at procedure, help me out here. We've got this afternoon, the motion and to ratify the budget and then we'll have two readings of it. Right? So, we are commendably on schedule for a, confirming a 279 million dollar budget, which is clearly not chump change. So, thank you all very much. I think that it's appropriate then, the chair will entertain a motion to adjourn. If I missed something?
Yeah.
All right, there's a motion in a second. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. All opposed, no. Thank you all. We are adjourned.